Good evening. This regular meeting of April 9th, 2018 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garten.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sancy.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
We have with us tonight from Prescott Elementary School here to lead us in the pledge. They want to come forward?
Hi, I'm Delaney Reynolds.
I'm Angelina.
I'm Zorain.
I'm Stretown.
I'm Nora.
I'm Brandon.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to have our students here tonight. These seven fifth graders from Prescott are all of our distinguished Dolphin candidates for this year. It's an opportunity that's open to all of our fifth grade students. These are children who are living our Prescott promise in exemplary ways to be respectful, responsible, resourceful at home, at school, and in the community. So they've been working for over a semester to create a portfolio that provides evidence of this. There's service, letters of recommendation from staff, peers, family members. They each have a mentor in the building who has been helping them. They have to submit at least eight journal entries, and they have a growth goal that they're working on. So these are children whose behavior, whose attendance, academics, and overall attitude are exemplary. So we're very proud of them. Thank you for letting them be here tonight.
Congratulations.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meetings on March 6th, the regular meeting on March 12th, the special meeting on March 20th, and the special meeting on April 2nd, 2018, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting on March 6th, the regular meeting on March 12th, the special meeting on March 20th, and the special meeting on April 2nd, 2018, as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. I need a motion.
I move the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication's cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Anyone wishing to come up, and we'll start with Mr. Kelleher.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Ryan Gams. Tonight, we were asking you to do two things. One, approve the certified budget for the 1819 school year, and also the levy rate that we use for property taxes to receive our funding for the 1819 school year. Kind of go through a booklet that we put out every year. Our department puts this out regarding the levy rate. It'll be on our website probably sometime this week, but it has some helpful facts in there about the levy rate. It contains some tables and some charts regarding some history on the levy rate. It has some school financial terms and their definitions in the booklet. And my one caveat for this year is this booklet went to print before the governor had signed and the legislature had passed the SSA rate. We assumed 1%, and that's what they approved, but there was some minor changes in district cost per pupil that was added to what the governor signed. So the exact dollar amounts, the exact amounts, we assumed one, but we didn't factor in those rates. So they are slightly different. You will see a four cent difference in the levy rate between what was in the book and what you're going to approve. Because of those modifications, it actually went down four cents, and I'll show that in a little bit. So I'm going to show some of the data and charts that's in this document. Go through that with you. First one I want you to see. Focus in. So this chart is the SSA or State Supplemental Aid over the last few years, the last 10 years, and I think it's on page five of the booklet. Want to really highlight kind of the last four years and show the low amount of funding that school districts have received in the past four years. I think if you were to average those four numbers, it's right about 1.4% over the last The next one is on page...
Kevin, could I just make a comment while you're reading for that? So if you look at that chart on page five, it talks about SSA over the last, and Kevin focused on four years. I'll go back to 2009, 10. You'll see an awful lot of zero, well, you'll see a zero, several twos, a 1.5, a two and a half. If you, that's just the 10-year picture. If you went back 30 years prior to this, the 20 years that led up to this, you would see an average of about 4%. So it is worth noting that the last decade has not been strong when it comes to school funding. So I just wanted to point out that you're seeing a 10-year snapshot. If you elongated that to 20, 25, 30 years, you would see a much more consistent number in the 3% to 4% range. I just didn't want to leave the wrong impression that that's been the trajectory for, it has now for almost a decade, but prior to that...
This is a snapshot of the levy rate for the last 10, 11 years. You can see the projection for this year of, I think it's about $14.59, 60 cents, somewhere in that neighborhood. You can see back in '08 through '12, the levy rate was right around $17, and in those past years, because as Stan just talked about, the lower funding, it also led to a slightly decline in the levy rate. So those two kind of go hand in hand. But you'll see again for this year, it went down slightly from last year. So I think last year's was about $14.97. And again, a lot of that levy rate is dictated by our general fund and the authorized budget. So again, and as those continue to stay low, the levy rate will probably follow along with that.
Kevin, you guys, that one chart there, I believe, that showed the property taxes, I believe, that might be willing to share with the public there. How we compared it to other UEN schools?
Yeah, I think that's the next slide.
What, the next one?
Yeah, that's the next one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. As it comes into focus. What we do in this booklet is every year is we compare our projected school levy rate for 1819 to what the UEN districts had the past year. We don't know, they haven't approved, a lot of them haven't approved their levy rates for this year. So we always just compare it to the prior year, just to show you where we're at. And you can see again for this upcoming year, our levy rate is at the bottom of the levy rate of other UEN schools. So I think it shows that we try to maximize our dollars, but continue to keep the levy rate at as low a rate as possible.
Help, tell me if I'm wrong, Kevin. The moral of that story is, we can collect the money if we want to, we can impose that, but we can't spend it anyway, because there's spending authority. You can only spend so much money as a district. You can't just wantonly collect all the money that you want to and spend scads of money on kids. There's a formula that says you can only spend so much. So we make the decision that that money is better off in the pockets of the taxpayers rather than hoarding cash that we can't spend anyway, but not all districts feel that way.
Right. And our goal really, as you know, we've been saying for several years now, our goal is just to have a three-month cash supply. Again, because of the way school funding comes, we need a three-month balance to carry out our expenses. Now, this is not in the, it's in the document, but in a wrong amount. This was, again, done before the state had set their rate and the governor had signed it. So this is the certified budget amounts that we're asking you to approve tonight, and along with that, on the bottom is the levy rate. And you can see that down here on this document. So tonight, we're asking you to approve a $14.59 levy rate. It's closer to 60 cents, actually.
Compared to last year, Kevin?
Last year was $14.97. So that's why you saw on the chart, it went down a little bit from the prior year. So you ask yourself, how does this affect the different types of property taxpayers? So we'll start at the top with the residential. So you say, okay, if the levy rate's going down, right, the average property taxpayer should see a decrease. Unfortunately for the residential, the Dubuque area had an increase in valuations ordered by the state of about 7%. So all valuations went up roughly 7%. So that increase is higher as a percentage than our decrease in rate. So it does create a small increase to average homeowner compared to what they paid last year. Now, in theory, their house is supposed to be worth a little more, but again, that was state ordered. That's not under our control. So on the average value of a house in Dubuque, and we use the city tables, that's where we get this information, you'll see on here, a $25.72 increase on average property of about $139,000. Now, adjust it for the four cents, it's actually $22.38, so a minor adjustment. But now, let's talk about the other types of property. So the first one you can see is commercial. They had no valuation changes. So on a piece of average property of a value of $432,000, their levy rate is going down because our levy rate went down. Industrial is the same thing. No changes to the valuation, no changes to the rollback, so their levy rate is going down. The amount of taxes they're paying is going down compared to last year. And the big winner this year is those that own multi-residential, so like the apartments, for example. They not only had a change in the rollback, which is a decrease, which means they take the rollback number times the assessed valuation, so that number went down a little bit, plus our rate went down. So they have substantially higher savings than the other types of property. So those are the four types of property that we highlight and the effects of our levy rate.
And I remember, it must, it's probably been 15 years now when I was on the board first time, and I want to say that the formula was so, and I'm interested to see how this new formula adjustment plays out over time, but, you know, back in the day, we raised, we were raising our budget by 2% or 3% as a district, and in order for that to happen, I think residential property owners, the one year, it stands out in my mind because we really talked about it a lot, saw like a 1% or 2% increase in what they paid year over year. Industrials, because of the old formula, industrials saw a 5% increase, and commercial saw a 15% increase. So it was really a crazy, so I don't think back then, tell me if I'm wrong, that there was, that multi, that multi-residential was a category back then.
That was just created a few years ago.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So does anyone have any questions on the data presented, or anything about the certified budget or levy rate?
So just for those viewing aren't familiar with this, the school district, am I correct? The school district is asking less of the taxpayers for residential, those who own homes.
They're asking for a lower rate.
Lower rate.
Right. They will actually pay a little bit more on the residential.
But the taxes will, they'll see some increase because the property values have increased.
Correct.
Okay. But from the school district, it's less of an asking.
It's a lesson of a levy rate.
Levy rate, right.
And I think we had a period where three years in a row, a couple of years ago, the previous three years in a row, we actually saw a decrease in what the average taxpayer paid. Not just the rate, but the actual amount that they paid actually went down slightly, like three years in a row. So we are sensitive to it. We really do try and keep our spending in line with what citizens can afford and want to afford. So we're very sensitive to that, to the best we can.
And there's challenges there because of the valuation changes and the rollback changes and the...
We're not in control of what's...
Right. We don't get to control those things.
I mean, that's the key.
Right.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kelleher? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody in the audience have anything? This is still a public hearing?
I move the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2018, 2019 as published.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2018, 2019 as published. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, we've got a couple of projects. Why don't we go with the overview of the project of the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Hood Project? We'll start with that.
Good evening, everybody. The purpose of this project is to replace the existing kitchen exhaust system at Washington Middle School. It's simply outdated. It doesn't provide adequate ventilation. It doesn't take away the cooking odors and the steam from dishwashing and cooking activities over there. So other improvements are also going to be made while we're doing this type of project to the kitchen fire suppression system, and new lighting will be installed in the kitchen also. The estimate, the architect estimated the cost of this work at $160,000, and after the public hearing, he'll report the bids.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Hood Project and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Hood Project and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Anybody wishing to address about the Washington exhaust fan? Okay?
I move the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted adopting the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Hood Project.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted adopting the plan specification form and contract and estimate total cost of the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Hood Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, I'll be referring to page 35 in your board packet. Bids for the replacement of the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Project were open and read aloud on March 29th. There were no apparent bid irregularities. The bids were well-prepared, complete, and competitive. The three bids that we received were Tricon General Construction, $174,900, Portson Construction, $177,000, and Clower Construction, $138,940. Straka Johnson and Buildings and Grounds is recommending that the Dubuque Community School District enter into a contract with Clower Construction, the amount of $138,940 for the exhaust project at Washington Middle School.
I move that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Hood Project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Clower Development Corporation Doing Business as Clower Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of $138,940.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Hood Project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Clower Development Corporation Doing Business as Clower Corporation of Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of $138,940. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. All right. We are now on to board salutes.
I have a board salute here. A board salute goes out to Jennifer Klinkhammer, the Executive Director of the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools, who will be leaving her post as her family relocates to, out of the area. Jennifer has been a strong advocate for public education, and more specifically for our district. Her work at the foundation has helped it grow as an organization, and she leaves it prepared to continue its outstanding progress. We wish Jennifer and her family much success in the future, and know that they will always be part of the Dubuque Community School District family. We also welcome Amy Unmack, currently sixth-grade math teacher at Roosevelt, who will assume the executive director role in June. Amy is an outstanding teacher, and while we will be sad to lose her from the classroom, we look forward to the great work she will undoubtedly do on behalf of the foundation. So tomorrow is the banquet, the luncheon, the foundation for public school luncheon, and I assume there'll be more mention there, but thanks to Jennifer, and we welcome Amy to the, I have another, as long as I've got it here, I'll take another.
Sure, go for it.
I'd like to give a shout out to the Jefferson students and their directors for the fine musical Hairspray. It was an outstanding performance by well over 100 students. The theme of hairspray was a very powerful message, appropriate, and it was very well done. So shout out, bravo to Jeff.
And I would piggyback on that. I attended Friday night, and it has been a decade-plus since they have sold out a show, and they sold out both nights, Friday night and Saturday night. And if you showed up without a ticket Saturday night, it was just good luck getting in. It was fantastic, large, diverse cast and crew, spectacular performance, and just great to see that that was so well-received by the community, sell out both nights.
That's great. Thank you.
I have a board salute. Our heartfelt thank you goes to the estate of Dr. June Streber. Dr. Streber served on the school board from 1983 to 1989. Her estate provided for two very generous gifts that support students in the Dubuque Community School District. The first provides $10,000 to be used for students who are taking advanced placement courses and cannot afford the fees for the exam. The second provides $10,000 to be held in trust to expend $1,000 annually to a college-bound, financially needed, needy female student graduated from Dubuque Community Schools who is committed to teaching of English, American, and British literature. Dr. Streber's generosity will provide lasting impact to our students and exemplifies her commitment to the student's success at the Dubuque Community School District.
Great, that's wonderful.
I'd like to piggyback on that one as well. I promise I won't make you happy.
That's okay.
We, for many years, had paid the cost of AP testing for students who were reintroduced. Some legal changes at the state level made that an illegal expense, and we had many of our students who couldn't afford to take the exam, and you know in our most recent version of the strategic plan that we are pushing all of our students to have post-secondary experiences while they're high school students, and the AP exam is one of those, or the AP class, FABET exam, is one of those experiences that we want more and more of our students to experience. So to find a way through someone's generosity to pay for that test, make it possible for many, many students every year, that's just a fantastic donation.
Hopefully, that $10,000 lasts for many years. How long that'll stretch out?
We'll find ways to, but that's really, it's extremely impactful donation.
If I recall, when she was on the board, it's kind of when the AP programs got their head start, so to speak. So that's great. Yeah.
And she had been an English teacher at secondary and college level.
Great.
That's great.
Thank you.
I have a board salute for Annette Wolers, who's the instructional coach at Audubon Elementary School. Annette received the Champion of Service Award from Dubuque Mayor Roy Buell. It's an award that recognizes people who are alumni or current national service members whose service has made a significant impact. Annette was recognized for hosting and providing accommodations to foster grandparent volunteers who work with elementary students to practice literacy and math skills. We, I certainly send congratulations on our behalf to Annette for this final award. Well-deserved. Also, many probably recognized in the Telegraph Herald last Wednesday, April 4th, that our own John Deere Dubuque Works is supporting in a partnership through our schools and the St. Stephen's Food Bank, a wonderful opportunity for folks who need some additional food in our, in our community. And more than 300 John Deere workers came together and filled 1,200 boxes with food, and then the employees will work with St. Stephen's Food Bank over the next two weeks to distribute the boxes at six of our schools. So Jefferson Middle School, along with Audubon, Fulton, Lincoln, Marshall, and Prescott Elementary Schools, will have the opportunity for families to have some additional support with food. And we certainly recognize the great work that our John Deere Dubuque Works has doing there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else with a board salute?
I see Ann McDonough in the crowd tonight. Ann put together a terrific women's leadership program a few weeks ago that impacted 180 to 100 kids, and just really celebrated some terrific young leaders that we have in our schools. And so, very generous grant from the McDonough Foundation supported that. So thank you very much, Ann. See, Joni, you don't even need to send a notice out, we have Ann right here. But thank you very much for your time on that. The kids were just lit up as they walked into that. It was fun to watch.
It was, very well. Anyone else?
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time?
I move the Board...
Oh, wait, we do. We will have...
Okay.
Sorry. Please state your name and address when you get up to the podium, please.
My name is Ann McDonough. I live at 2469 Whitetail in Asbury, and many of you know me, and I am a candidate for Dubuque County Supervisor's Board position here in Dubuque. I'm a graduate of Hempstead. I'm a champion of public education. What I would like to just say, Tom, is that two folks who really put together that Women's Empowerment Conference, it is the brainstorm and the energy of the counselors at Hempstead who have created this, and all they did was present us with an opportunity to write a check, and I love those moments. But what I want to say to you is, you know, the Board of Supervisors deals with property taxes too, and we look at the amount of levies, and all of those things are heartbreaking for us as well when we see what the state does in terms of financing. But we do need to think about our candidates for office. Are they champions at every level for public education? At every level, will they make connections for you and for you with state representatives who can make those numbers change? And I just want to tell you that I really am fired up about this, that it's not just about roads and... about roads and bridges. We need to think about infrastructure differently, and I think taxpayers are ready to accept that challenge. You know, it's kind of like, how low can we go? Okay? So I'm running for the Board of Supervisors, but I want you to know how dedicated I am to public education, that I have served from the earliest days of my son's life on the site council at Bryant with John Burgart before he was a superintendent. I'm a trustee at Clark University. I've taught at the college level. I've taken the certificate class to be a substitute teacher in the Dubuque Community School District. I'm a non, I do not practice at this time, but when I practice law, I practice special education law. There are so many things we can do with connections between departments and governmental bodies that we don't think maybe have correlation, and I want to tell you that if we elect people who are dedicated to education, to make those pitches to representatives at the state level and at Washington, whenever we find them, that is really critically important. Every day, with whatever I do at the McDonough Foundation or whatever, I'm looking for ways to make those connections on behalf of our kids. You know, this community is about education. The numbers of colleges, private schools, public schools, Bible colleges, we are an education hub, and I really think we need to stand up and shout that. We can lead on some of these things, too. So I appreciate your generosity and listening to me tonight as a hometown kid and someone who believes in public education, and I thank you for that shout-out. Tomorrow, we're going to talk about yoga and the schools, also something the McDonough Foundation decided to fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
The school board does not have to participate in the yoga.
Yes.
I'm hoping, right?
Good for all of us. It could be good, but I'm not flexible on that.
It'd be a closed session.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve... Sorry, you got me off. Those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any board member wishing to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to remove number two, the personnel report, please.
Okay, withstanding that removal, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And the consent agenda with that removal.
I think Stan wants to inform us a little bit here about some personnel changes.
As you know, spring is that time of year where we have retirees, folks who leave us after long careers in education, and that's the situation at both Kennedy and Bryant Elementary Schools where the principals are retiring after quite a lengthy time of service. And so we will have some time to honor those retirees at a, at a future board meeting. But tonight, we have the privilege of bringing forward their replacements. So just stand up, you don't need to make a speech or anything, but you're certainly welcome to if you want to. We have with us tonight Brenda Duval, who will be the principal at Kennedy Elementary School starting next year. Brenda has been with the district for quite a while, is both a special education teacher, a coordinator of special education here at the Forum, a department chair at Roosevelt, an assistant principal currently at Roosevelt, and will be moving to take on our largest and in some ways most program-diverse with special education building in Kennedy Elementary. And then next to her, we have Megan Richardson, who also has a long-standing experience in both Dubuque and started her teaching career in Wisconsin. I'm going from memory, so if I screw up, just smile and pretend. That's a good skill to practice. And is currently the instructional coach at Irving Elementary School. So we had many candidates, many highly qualified candidates for these positions. We did nine interviews, which is an unprecedented number of interviews for these positions, and clearly Brenda and Megan shone through as the top choice of not only the committees that were put together at the building level, but also the folks here at the Forum. So we know that we will be well-served for many, many years with both of them as elementary principals. So just wanted to put a name and a face together and say welcome, and we're excited to welcome you in as the future leadership of the district as our two newest elementary principals.
Congratulations.
I move that we approve the personnel report as submitted.
Thank you.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the personnel report as submitted. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we are now on to our Facilities and Support Services. Mr. Porhaska.
Yes, our Facilities and Support Services Committee met last Monday, and there are quite a few recommendations or motions I'm going to make here. I'd just like to point out that these are discussed highly at our committee meetings, and they are not treated lightly. So number one here, I'd like to move that the Board of Education adopt a resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 to issue debt to reimburse the Dubuque Community School District for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt a resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 to issue debt to reimburse the Dubuque Community School District for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects. Do you want to give a brief little explanation?
This resolution is needed in order to go back and recapture some expenditures that take place from this point forward. You know, we borrowed some money in the sales tax for 2017 bond for Workday Senior. That money will be used up in total here this month or for sure in the month of May. So we need this resolution because we will be selling bonds in 2018 to take that money and go back and reimburse the district's for expenditures when that 2017 bond money runs out. And this is used for the remaining balance on the senior project, as well as if and when the ALC addition, the bids come in and that project is approved and moved forward, we will also use those bond sales in '18 to help pay for that project as well. So the bond sales are limited to those two particular projects at this time.
Good. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the preschool fee for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the preschool fee for the year, for the 2018-2019 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation to Kennedy School of Student Workstation Dividers in the amount of $570, and a Gaga ball pit in the amount of $1,000.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation to Kennedy School of Student Workstation Dividers in the amount of $570, and a Gaga ball pit in the amount of $1,000. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to thank the young men that came forward to the committee meeting last week, the Morand Brothers. They were dressed in their scouting uniforms, and they're both graduates of Kennedy School, and they saw a need for these projects, and they did a nice presentation, and they're true to their school, so to speak.
Mm-hmm. Good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve Hewlett-Packard as the sole source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals to be reviewed on an annual basis.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Hewlett-Packard as the sole source provider for the purchase of client computer equipment and peripherals to be reviewed on an annual basis. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the district pool replacement project, and set the date, time, and location as May 14, 2018, at 5:30 at the Forum, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the district pool replacement project, and set the time, date, and location as May 14, 2018, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any further, any discussion?
I think that we all realize that our original bids came in high, much higher than we expected, and basically, we're going back somewhat to the drawing board, except the scope of the project, for the better part, hopefully will remain the same with our partners, et cetera.
We made a few changes, looking for some cost reductions, but the changes weren't, don't change the functionality of the pool, the width, the length, the diveability. Most of them were somewhat aesthetic in nature, so we will have the same functionality of the pool pending these bids.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number 14 to Conlon Construction on the senior high renovation project in the increased amount of $34,519.41.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number 14 to Conlon Construction on the senior high school renovation project in the increased amount of $34,519.41. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the executive construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Geese Roofing Company for the Jefferson Middle School Roof Replacement Project.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Geese Roofing Company for the Jefferson Middle School Roof Replacement Project. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proposal for subsurface exploration with team services for the Alta Vista Campus Project in the amount of $6,300.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proposal for subsurface exploration with team services for the Alta Vista Campus Project in the amount of $6,300. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to remind folks that whenever, whenever we are in the process of looking at building something, obviously, the type of soil has to be determined, and that's what this testing is all about.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, we have a non-action item, Certificate of Excellence in financial reporting, Kevin. Another feather in, in our hat, so to speak, or in your hat, or in your team's hat.
Team's hat. Just wanted to make the board aware of the Certificate of Excellence in financial reporting that the district received for our 2017 year-end financial statements. That was June 30th. We put together what is called a comprehensive annual financial report, and the information in that is audited by our auditors. But then our district takes an extra step, and we send it to the Association of School Business Officials International for them to review, to make sure we're reporting on all the things that we're supposed to in a CAFER. That agency sends us a 39-page checklist that we go through to make sure we're reporting all the things that we're supposed to in order to get this award. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, there's only 15 districts in the state of Iowa who received this award, and I would like to now publicly thank Rick Till and Joan Stephens in my department, because they put together probably 95% of the information in that document, so they have a huge hand in getting this award.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I, we don't have that non-action. I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Could report on a couple items tonight. One, on page 129 of your packet, there is a recap of the general fund expenditures year-to-date, along with the encumbrances, and based on that information, I would just like to report that projecting out for the remainder of the year, we are still below or near our projections for total expenditures for the fiscal year. Those projections we did early in the fall, so I think we're rolling along as planned.
That's always good to hear.
The second piece I'd like to bring your attention to is on page 136 of your packet, has to do with total general fund revenue. If you look at the percent of dollars collected from year-to-date, we're only at 67%, but we're through 75% of the year. Something to keep in mind is October and April is when we receive a huge chunk of our property tax dollars. So I'm not concerned that this number is only 67% because here in a week or two, we're going to receive probably around $16 million worth of property taxes from the county. Okay?
Good.
Any other questions on that report?
Just to say thank you. How fortunate are we to have you and Rick and Joan and the others on your staff with such integrity and such classy way of handling a lot of money.
Thank you, Ann. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're very proud of the work we do.
And you should be.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you. We can move on to Ed Programs, Policy, and Strategy Committee Report.
Thank you. The, our committee met for a work session last Tuesday, April 3rd, and basically, we dealt with three general items. The first I want the community to be aware of is the Threat Assessment Protocol. In this time when safety and security are so paramount in all of our minds, I'm grateful that our district, in so many ways, is addressing where are we, and where are we going, and how can we keep improving our safety and security measures to keep our schools safe, and our students safe, and our staff safe. So May Hinchin brought to us the, an update on the Threat Assessment Protocol, which is being developed to have a system of guidelines in place to identify a process that does three things, and I think it's noteworthy. The first is that it identifies students, when a student is creating a threat that could eventuate in a violent act. And this Threat Assessment Protocol will help us to look at the possibility that that threat could actually become a violent act. Secondly, it determines the seriousness of the threat. It's very hard to be in the situation to know, is this a real threat? Is it not a real threat? If so, to what extent is it a threat? So this is going to be very helpful for that. Thirdly, it develops an intervention plan that protects not only the potential victims of such a crime, but it also addresses the underlying problems or conflict that could have stimulated the threatening behavior by the person making it. You know, we hear of mental health issues. There are many things that can cause a person to flip over into such a situation, and this will be very, very helpful to us. The ultimate goal is keep our schools safe, keep our students and staff safe. And also, I think noteworthy, is that it also seeks to help potential offenders overcome the sources of their anger, hopelessness, despair, depression, whatever it might be. So I think the community needs to be aware that that is in motion, along with some other things that are, that are there as well. In the end, it could help prevent suicide, alcohol and drug abuse, physical abuse, dropout, criminal activity. It's in the development stages, more to come. Just want to be aware that we're working with May on that, in support of May on that. Secondly, we heard an update from Cindy Stephens and Tammy Dear about the pilot of the elementary standards-based report card, which is being piloted in all of our elementary schools by some teachers, by our content leaders. It is, what Cindy and Tammy brought to our group was... It is-- what Cindy and Tammy brought to our group was in feedback about the pilot from parents and from teachers who are using it, as well as information about what modifications will be made as a result of the pilot. So, we're excited at the system shift that results from being focused on standards in this way, and we thank them for bringing us information. Thirdly, we worked with the 10 policies. Every five years, the Board has to review and revise, as needed, all policies. So, we roughly look at about 10 per meeting. They've already been approved on the consent agenda, and in addition tonight, nine will be receiving their-- are receiving their second reading. So, we bring those forward for the Board's action. In addition, one of the operational things being recommended to us, Joni Lucas, our Board Secretary, brought it to us, is a recommendation to remove the legal references from district policies. If and if we've-- as we've looked at policies, we see a legal reference to the Code of Iowa, and because that's a continuously refining and revising and changing thing, legal advice has been to stop putting that as a part of our policies. So, I bring a motion that the Board of Education approve the removal of the legal references from district policies on the advice of legal counsel and authorize the district administration to effectuate such removal.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve removal of the legal references from district policies on the advice of legal counsel and authorize the district administration to effectuate such removal. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Anything else, Ms. Bradley?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. Okay, that takes us into some new business.
I move the Board of Education approve the revised 2017-2018 Board Committee Assignments.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the revised 2017-2018 Board Committee Assignments. It was just taking a member from one committee to another who couldn't make some of the meetings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move-- Everybody wants that one.[1489.33][1489.33](laughter)
Yeah. Go ahead, Tom. You can do it.
I move that the Board of Education excuse seniors for making up canceled school days.
Well, after I could show there's like five seconds.[1501.01][1501.01](laughter)
A second.[1503.01][1503.01](laughter)
I second.
That was one.
Okay, I need an official second, okay. Yeah. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education excuse seniors for making up canceled school days. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Take two seconds and explain that after the fact.
Yeah, sure. Sorry.
So, just for those of you watching at home, it's not that we don't value the educational experience of our seniors, but clearly, we have to create a calendar that has a graduation date on it, so parents can plan. So, the law requires us to have a calendar for all students. It's 180 days or the equivalent number of hours. For seniors, it's 175 days or the equivalent number of hours. But they are waived, if the Board so chooses, from snow days because we don't want to change the date of graduation. We need to have a shorter calendar because there's a lot of work that goes in between that last day and making sure finals are passed. Everything is kosher so that students who are across that stage actually have earned a diploma, and so that we can get all the paperwork done. So, that's why, because we don't want to adjust graduation dates, we waive the seniors making up of snow days. The fact that it's very popular with my daughter, who's a senior, doesn't have anything to do with that fact.
Thank you. I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 819837 at this time.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 819837 at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Any Board member or administrative issues not on the agenda?
I'd like to bring up a thing that our school district was posed in a positive light. I attended last Saturday's Cracker Barrel, and Todd Bowman, the state senator from Jackson County and part of Dubuque County, informed me that he-- they basically introduced a bill in the legislature requiring financial literacy in the high schools. And I don't know if it's going to get any traction at all this year, but it did come, and I know that some school districts already have that as a requirement in their high school, but not all. So, I just went-- and he did give a special shout-out to us that in Dubuque Public Schools, we are in the process of doing that, and it shows that we are forward-thinking, and we've set some trends, hopefully, in the state.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just add to what Ann McDonough was talking about earlier as we're starting to wrap up the legislative session. Remember the impact that this commercial and industrial property tax reform that was passed some five years ago now, and it has failed to create any type of positive economic growth. That is a now almost a $400 million albatross around the neck of the, you know, the state of Iowa, and that's a challenge for us when we look at-- you saw the graph on school district supplemental state aid. That is the big piece because what we hear all the time when we go down to talk to legislators is, well, there's just not enough money because, well, the problem is they've taken a 400 pushing $500 million haircut off the growth that actually Iowa does have before they even started allocating and creating any type of budget. So, you know, our advocacy probably just never ends, but I know now the challenge that the counties, the cities are going to have is they're talking about eliminating the backfill, and that's really what that-- that's what that is. So, there has to be a different-- there has to be a different way of running state government, and I'm hoping they figure that out because I don't think you're going to see much of a change in that supplemental state aid until they do.
Agreed. Thank you. Anything else?
I would just add, I think it's going to be great at that yoga session coming up that Phil and Kevin and Joni and Stan and our two new principals will adequately represent the Board and the--
I'm sick that day, Tom. I'm not sure when it is, but I'm sick that day.[1764.13][1764.13](laughter)
All right, anything else? We are adjourned.